My name is Beth Moore. I am a life member of Nephean District Historic Society. I grew up in Penrith in the 50s, at a time when people were more regletarian. I lived in Ladby Avenue next to Nephean Avenue, which was the home to all the doctors, lawyers and bank managers of the town. All the children were treated the same in every yard we played in. The women of the house gave the orders and supplied the drinks and made the rules. And the only rule from my parents was to be home when the street lights came on. The bottom end of Ladby and Nephean Avenue ran onto market gardens and some of the mums earned a bit of money picking peas and beans in the season. Two characters stand out in my memory. One we call Count Omar. He owned one of the first boats that cruised up the Nephean River, a forerunner to the Nephean belly. And he lived in Memorial Avenue. He had a beautiful clipped white beard and a big moustache. And he dressed formally in white and drove a vintage open topped car. The other man was called, we called the Dutchman. He owned a home next to Peachtree Creek, which became the first headquarters for the Penrith Tennis Club. He had a smart sulky and kept a horse and drove into Penrith with a horse and sulky. Probably the last person to do that. Bonfire night was the highlight of the year. My friend's father, who had a garage where the Clearwater Motel is now, owned the land from Weir Road to Peachtree Creek, which is now a park. And he allowed the children of the area to build bonfires. And he kindly supplies tyres to get it started. One year, a neighbour called out the summon and lit it early. So we all grabbed our crackers and got the night underway. My favourite bonfire in teenage years, just before they were banned, was out at McColl's Warehouse in Regentville Road. Graham McColl was in the Presbyterian Fellowship in Penrith and hosted the event. His mother provided big boilers of spaghetti bolognese. Important things in my youth were libraries. Now, the Penrith Council's first library that I attended was in the Old School of Arts, which is now the home of the University of the Age. And then in 1964, a new building opened on the corner of Lawson and Henry Street and the library was there for 30 years. The present one in 1994 opened and has been extended and remodelled since then and has become a hub with modern computer systems learning, all supplied by the council. Tennis. The court at the School of Arts was opened in 1933. 1952 saw the tennis court in Judges Park, which is just at the back of High Street. The girls played in private tennis courts in the town when we were in high school. The boys used the council courts at Judges Park. There was a big difference now in the number of courts. If I took you on a little walk down High Street, in the 50s, I would have two courts at St Stephen's Church, two courts at the Miss Ingle Elles, who both owned fashion shops, one on each side of High Street and competed against each other. So we had the St Stephen's Church, the Ingle Church. Dr Yren had courts behind his place. We then had the Woodruff Courts. Mrs Neill had one up on Dunmore Street. And there was a lot of private courts. Now in Penrith, there's only the council courts, probably because the price of land's got so high. Pool. I learnt to swim at the Weir. You have to remember there was no pool in Penrith. So the primary school children were bussed down to the Weir. The main teachers were Mrs Dunn for the girls and Arthur Street was in charge of the boys. And I remember my first instruction. Hold on to a rock and kick. And that's how we learnt to swim. Now, there was a little diving plank that someone had put there. I don't mean a big tower, I mean built up on a small pair of bricks and a plank out. What visitors didn't know and us local kids did was if you jumped off one side, you're in two foot of water. If you jumped off the other, you were in six foot of water. So guess which side we told the kids to jump off? Another popular swimming hole, which was washed away in the floods, was opposite the Rowing Club. It was called Little Manly. Had a lovely sandy beachfront into the water and all the beautiful trees at the back made lovely shades for picnics. You'd get up to 200 people there at the weekends. Unfortunately, it was washed, the sand and everything was washed away in a flood and that was the end of Little Manly as a swimming area. 1961, 62, we got the Penrith Pool opened, which was great for the schools and carnivals because before then, the high school used to have to use Cookson's, which was a private pool at one of the factories. Rowing. You can't talk about Penrith and not talk about rowing. If you go overseas, it's the thing most people know the town for. That and our football team. The first recorded boat race was in the early 1850s. But the one that most people talk about, when Australian oilman William Beach challenged the current world champion, Edward Hanlon from Canada, for the championship of the world. On Saturday, the 26th of November 1887, to the delight of the local crowd, Beach won by three quarters of a length with the fastest time on record. The winner received private money of £400 and a reception the following week, which was held in the Town Hall in Sydney. Now, this explains why we have a beach street in Emu Plains. Penrith Rowing Club was able to stage its first annual event in that year. Clubs went and came. Its most important one was the famous King Cup, was run here. When the fate of the club seemed dire in the mid 1930s, the announcement that the Empire Games, now known as the Commonwealth Games, was to be rowed on the Nephean River in 1938. And that gave a huge boost to the club and the interest in rowing. Penrith's first Olympic rail was Max Annett, one of the Cox Four teams which finished fifth at the Roma Livics in 1960. Since then, the depth of rowing progress has highlighted by the club's success in major competitions. The prestigious King's Cup, an interstate competition of eight oilmen, was rowed several times in Nephean. It was initially over three miles, which was changed in 1960 to 2,000 metres. The annual GPS head of the river competition between Sydney private schools was also rowed on the river for many years. In recent times, it's moved to Penrith Lakes and is now held at the newly opened Sydney International Rowing Regatta Centre. On GPS days, my father allowed me to park cars in the yard, greatly improving my financial status. It was a great day. Buses came from all the major Sydney schools and there was a dance held at the long cabin afterwards. And up to 40,000 people lined the banks. Nephean theatre provided great entertainments in the 50s and 60s. I went to the Saturday matinees, which included a cereal, a cartoon and two movies. And if I was lucky, on Saturday night, my father had booked to go to the night sessions. They were that popular, you had to book. Now, churches. Most families in the 50s attended church, myself included. I went to the Presbyterian Sunday School. And most of them had fellowships and girls' and men's clubs. They also usually ran teams in all the sports competitions in the district. One thing about the Penrith churches is a bit interesting. The land for the Presbyterian Church, the Methodist Church, the Church of England, the Catholic Church, were all given by one man. He said if he gave land to one church, everybody would be upset. So he gave the land for all the churches, which was a huge boost. Q Theatre. When did the Q Theatre open? It officially opened in 1977. And it was held in the old hall. And it was opened by Doreen Warburton. She was brought from Sydney to start a theatre in Penrith. And then the Q Theatre moved to the Joan Sutherland in 2005. My mother and I loved the old Q Theatre. She was friends with Doreen Warburton, who lived in a house supplied by the log cabin in Memorial Avenue as part of the package to lure her to Penrith. She had a lovely collie dog which she walked past our home. Now, if we go on to the Joan Sutherland Centre, was opened in 1990 by Mayor of Penrith Brian King and Dr Malcolm Borland. Now, Malcolm Borland, who was a very keen pianist and interested in the arts, was the main driving force in getting the Joan Sutherland built in Penrith. So he was deserved to be in the opening party. In 2005, the theatre was extended. The only thing that shows what was there before is a row of gum trees. On the outside of the Joan Sutherland Centre, which is the driveway into the council, is a large row of white gum trees. They used to lie in the football field of what was then Penrith's raff barracks, complete with a guard on the front gate in High Street and the women's barracks. They hosted a lot of football games and things. And I used to watch my husband play on that field. And then we were hosted at a barbecue at the sergeant's mess afterwards. They were very much part of the community. I remember steam trains running and going to Sydney with my mother, who always wore hat and gloves. I especially enjoyed going Christmas holidays to see the highly decorated Sydney shops. People used to pick up coal which fell off the tracks. You've got to remember that in those days, Penrith was so small, you had goats at Castle Ray, Kingswood and at Emu Plains because there just wasn't a volume of traffic that would warranty bridges. In 1862, the first train to Penrith was reputed to have been driven by John Heron. And there's a well-known commuter train running now in his name. The train terminated at Parker Street before the station was built. The first electric train ran in Penrith in 1953. And State Rail had extended a station to meet the present day needs. Penrith Show was more agricultural than the present one. But you have to remember the district was all farms. And so you had displays of produce, farm animals and lots of horse competitions. It was held in February, it usually rained. And the ground was so boggy that some people wore gong boots. One attraction was the boxing tent, where the local boys tried their luck against Max Brophy's boys. Penrith at that time effectively ended at Jamison Road, south side being small poultry farms, trotting stables and small orchards. Castle Ray, where I lived when I was six, was mostly farmland and orchards. The farm that I live in, lived on, is approximately where the rowing course is today. When we first moved to Penrith during the 50s, I remember Mrs Carter, who had a peach orchard at Castle Ray, where the Crane Enfields factory is now, used to come round in an old truck, hulking buckets of peaches. Dr Maurice Renshaw lived in Nephean Avenue and had a small night surgery a couple of days a week for the locals. He bought a farm, which is now Peachtree Estate, and would talk to my father for hours on the best way of doing things. Emu Plains were dairy farms and orchards. And the orchesters planted bitter oranges along the fence to deter us kids. And the famous Imperial Mandarin was propagated here. Split up in the early 70s for housing and light industry, it now has a great shopping area in Lennox, which was built on the site of the so-called Government House, a relic from when Emu was operated until 1812 as a convict farm. The prison farm was part of the area and often donated fruit and vegetables to fates in Penrith. Kingswood had vineyards and sawmills. Now, it is the important home of our hospital, TAFE and UWS, and the Penrith Cemetery, which are all situated in Kingswood. Mulgwa. I lived there when I was five and started school walking from the farm called Mount Henry, which is now a horse assessment and honey producer. Fantastic views from the home. It was mostly dairy farms, which unfortunately now are all closed. And probably the biggest thing we're going to remember Mulgwa for in future is the beautiful Cox Homes. Fairlight being one of them, which is being opened up very shortly as a big tourist centre. My first Penrith school was actually, it's actually heritage listed because it was built in 1894. And no, I didn't go there then. The creek running through the grounds was called Typhoid Creek. It was so polluted. It combined with the high school, a primary school in 1991. When I went to the school in the 50s, girls were upstairs because we were well behaved and had lady teachers. The boys were downstairs with men teachers. And the playground was segregated by a white chalk mark. The school had a brown, yellow and white uniform, which changed to red, white and blue in the 1999. But that does explain to people why Penrith Panther's first strip was brown and white, because they took it from the school colours. And that of course has changed to, I think the favourite one now is licorice of all the colours. Penrith High School stands on the site of the Towers. Dr Barber built the imposing facade onto the old Honsbury Wood residence named Talaga Murray. But the town referred to it as the Towers. The only thing remaining of that is two posts, which are set up in the garden at the front entrance of the high school. When my sister was going to TAFE in the early 50s, you had to go to Granville. But in 1953, a TAFE opened in Penrith, which was a huge help. Classes for women were held in the Roway Institute. And the actual building opened in 1961. Were proficient for 2,000 students. By 1980, the number of students enrolled had doubled. And now about 5,000 students attend courses. The college is part of the Nephean campus. Memory Park. In 1921, Penrith was allocated two gun trophies by the government, a German trench mortar and a howitzer. One of these is now located and looked after at the Arms of Australia Museum in Emu Plains. The money to make Memory Park was raised between the RSL and the council and public donation. Park opened in 1922 and was recorded on film and shown around the state. It was originally fenced and had a band standard. Seven tracheate memorial tablets showed the names of the returned or deceased soldiers who had resided within the municipality. In 1980s, veteran Jack Daly compiled the names of 87 local men who died in the Second World War and in the Korea and Vietnam Wars. Their names were added to the memorial. And that was unveiled in 1989. It was remodelled again in both 2005 and 2008. The remodelling was brought about mostly to include the nurses from the First World War, then names of the Second World War, then the names from Vietnam and Afghanistan. So they're all now included. Judges Park. Judges Park at the back of High Street shops was once the town tip. It was unsuitable for tennis, unsuitable for building and had the first tennis courts built on it. Woodruff Gardens. Woodruff Gardens commemorates the grantee of 1,000 acres to Captain Daniel Woodruff RN. And now, part of that grant, I found that my home, which I grew up in, which was the last house in High Street, 706 High Street, was built on the old Woodruff Grant. I found out this information by going through the files at the Penrith Library with the help of the marvellous council girls. So I can take that house right back to the first land grant. Now, the gardens which were named after him are on the other side of High Street with Woodruff Gardens, now has the new tennis courts. It was years known as Chinaman's Garden because it was operated as a market and garden. Jamison Park was named after Thomas Jamison, who granted 1,000 acres by Governor King. The ground is used by local sporting groups. Everything from netball to soccer to basketball use area and extremely popular. It has been upgraded with a new playground, nest swings, pod spinners, rubber flooring, as well as paths suitable for children's bikes and scooters. And it also has a dog park. Penrith Parkway. On Thursday, April 1964, a Penrith icon was born. Although there had been a racing track at the current Penrith Parkway since 1920s, harness racing didn't officially begin until that day, when the first registered meeting was held. A special act of parliament was enacted to place Penrith outside the 30 mile, 48 kilometre limit that was in force at the time and had prevented a licence being granted to city. Now, local people will tell you a story. They say that Dr Renshaw's brother, who was then the premier, organised that the measurers went three times around the town hall to get the right measurements in Sydney, giving us the right distance away to have our licence. It also became a greyhound track and now holds weekly markets on a Wednesday. It has a lovely cafeteria and is a big plus to the Penrith area. Local government in Penrith began with the formation of the district councils in 1843. Incorporation of the town of Penrith was followed by St Mary's, Castle Ray, Mulgwa and the Nephean Shore. 1949, all these local government authorities amalgamated to form Penrith Municipal Council. 10 years later, the municipality of Penrith was declared a city. 25th of October 1963, Emu Plains, Emu Heights and Leonie joined the Blue Mountains Council with the promise of water and sewerage being given to local residents. The land was split up in the 70s. The site for the museum was supposed to be split up and the council and a few prominent residents said that we had to keep something of the old Emu. So they decided that the land and the inn, which has now become the museum, was gifted by the developers to the people of Penrith after a lengthy court case. When you talk about Hunter's Field, that was donated by Hunter, who was a well-known orchardist in the area, therefore we have Hunter's Field. Jukes Oval. Very interesting. Jukes, very prominent in the area, very large family. At one stage, the Emu cricket team had 11 jukeses. So it was fitting that the cricket ground is named Jukes' Oval. Not a cheerful subject, but recognition has to be given to the council for its care of the cemeteries in the area, including the historical ones like Castle Ray, gazetted by Governor Macquarie, St Paul's, which is now owned by the council, St Stephen's, St Thomas's at Mulgwa, which are all kept in good order. Now, we talk about towns, we have to talk about fires. Our first station was built in 1907 and opened in 1908. The volunteer brigade was formed in 1895 with horse-drawn wagons, but was mechanised in 1920 and rebuilt in 1983. Traffic lights. I got my licence when I was 19. I was a teenage driver for one week. And we had one traffic light in Penrith at the time. And I would love to ask people where it was. The correct answer is Parker Street on the Northern Road. And one of the things that you had to do when you're getting your licence at that date, it had to be on a manual car. And one of the favourite testing places was Weir Hill, which at that time was an open road, which had a lovely slant to it and you had to do a stop-start on Weir Hill to get your licence. One of the things that is now missing from Penrith is a police box. Now, you probably don't know what a police box is. It was somewhere that the police, who were on bikes and things, could stop in, have a cup of tea, go to the toilets, do their office work, had a garage to put their vehicles in. And on the outside, it had a phone, which the local public could pick up and go straight to the police station. This of course was absolute irresistible to the local children, who just had to pick up the phone and wait for the sergeant to say, "Penrith Police Station here, drop it and run like mad". It was a very useful little building and at one stage was used for taking licences from. The local motorcycle cops, as I call them, used to have their bikes behind it. And as the cars went down High Street, the highway over to go over Victoria Bridge, if they were doing anything wrong, outward with the policeman, waving to my dad on the veranda as he went. So the police box was a very interesting little building. Unfortunately, in the 70s, a man was coming over Victoria and had a medical incident. I think it was a heart attack. And because of the camber of the road, he come right off the bridge, right down the road, straight through the fence and straight through the police box, which was never rebuilt. Now, if we talk about health. Dr Scott Young should go down as a great feminist. She opened the first pathology centre in Penrith. She was also mayor of Penrith from 1974 to 1977. Now, our radiology units are doing MRI tests and all the latest medical things. In my days in the 50s, if you had a serious problem, you went to Macquarie Street or to Sydney Hospitals. Nowadays, Nephean Hospital has a huge range of units and an extensive range of experts available to solve your problems. Governor Philip Hospital was prior to Nephean Hospital. It closed in 1956 when Nephean opened. The old hospital was reopened, remodelled and reopened as a specialty hospital. Our first hospital in Penrith opened in 1860 in a street now called Cox Avenue. This had six beds for inpatients, accommodation for the living wards person and his wife, who between them nursed the patients, cooked the meals, cleaned the hospital and anything else that was required. Sports. Sports have always been extremely big in the area. Tennis courts. Squash has mostly died out, but netball is very strong. Rugby league in the 50s. Our top players went to Parramatta. We got our own team in 67 and have won three premierships. Shopping. Food shopping was done by my mum. She'd order the food and then it was delivered by Bussells, which was a shop near the old post office and was her first choice. Meat was usually from Hall's Butchery. Lots of small dress shops and jewellery shops with two department stores. Neill's at the top of the hill and Fletcher's in the middle of High Street, which went on to become Grace Brothers Farmers Myers. Milk and bread and fruit were delivered. And the fresh food was mostly from shops and stalls. The fresh food was mostly from shops and stalls in the area. Emu Plains had a very good ones, which mostly sold local produce which was very fresh. You have to remember that the home yards were a lot bigger. Most people had vegetable gardens, fruit trees and often a chook pen. One of my happy memories was moving from the old Fletcher's Department Store down to the newest and latest plaza, which has been remodelled at least three times and expanded and expanded. Now, if we talk about garbage, we had one small tin bin. Nowadays, I've got three great wheelie bins. But I think one of the differences was we had a Besse Block incinerator, which of course is now banned entirely for pollution. We had very little plastic in those days. There's no such things as water bottles. Milk bottles were recycled and there was no prepared food packaging. Fish and chips came in this paper, all come in newspaper. Green waste went on the garden and was eaten by the chooks. People say, 'What do I think about Penrith?'. I say, 'I grew up in a country of small village. I now live in a modern city.' Advantages and disadvantages. In my village, I knew everyone. But in my city, I have theatres, hospitals, restaurants. So on the whole, I think it's gone the right way.